Select Board meeting to order on Thursday, November 16th at 7:00 PM. The agenda approval approved with a minutes of 11:0917 and 11:1517. Warrants, mail, administrative assistant report, new business. Victor.
Malani.
Malani will talk about the Southwest SBSU Safety Coordinator. Pownell Elementary School Safety Evacuation Plan. Shannon Versati will talk about the Pownell Recreational Task Force Trail Grant. Under old business demolition bids, town administrative job description, large gathering order in second reading, and then cameras, and then legal.
Or alarm system.
Or alarm system, whichever that we've discussed before. Okay. And I'll announce now that there's no meeting on November 23rd, 2017. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone out there. There will be a special meeting work session on November 30th, starting at 7:00 PM. And there'll be a special meeting, joint meeting with the BCRC at the Pownell Elementary School Library on December 7th, 2017, 6:00 PM to talk about, that was the river corridor or water?
Yeah, Housick River Corridor.
Corridor. Okay. With that said, somebody will take a motion.
So moved.
Sorry. Any further discussion or things to be added? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, approve with a minutes of 11:0917.
So moved.
Get a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those say aye if they approve.
Aye.
Nays, abstentions? Okay. Approve with a minutes of 11:1517. Need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Need a second.
Second.
Okay. All those, yeah, any discussion or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays, abstentions? Warrants.
Make a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
We had one issue, and it was a three to two vote. I think that should have been a roll call, not three to two.
Yeah.
On item number two.
Okay.
Who voted three, three, four, and two against?
Correct.
I think that should be a roll call, not a three to two.
On the minutes, on the minutes, the minute, minutes.
On the minutes, because if somebody reads the minutes, they'll say, well, it's three to two. It doesn't say who voted where.
So you're making the motions be amended that they show who voted which way?
That's right.
Okay, I get a second for that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? All people in favor of amending the minutes as requested, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, nays, ayes, okay. Now with that done, all those approving your minutes, say aye, because motion was to approve.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Warrants. Payroll report ending 11:17, 2017, in the amount of $7,919.89. Counts payable ending 11:17, 2017, in the amount of $3,697,287.92. One was the Pownell Elementary School budget, which was $1,652,869.05. The other was the Mount Anthony Union High School District for $1,418,807.30. And they were, and the road taxes was $593,864. Those were the big ones. With that said, take a motion to approve the warrants.
Motion to approve.
Get a second.
Second.
Any discussion on any of them? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mail. We have in front of us, I think we approved this the other day, application for transportation for alternative grants program for Snake Hill Road project. This is where the BCRC is helping us get a grant, and we're going to basically provide 20% of the non-federal local match. This was discussed with Joel. Has everybody seen this? And I thought we moved to do it then, and we just didn't have a letter, but all those in favor say aye, and I'll sign this.
Aye.
Aye.
Need a motion first. I'm sorry. I got a motion, get a second.
We just did what you told us to do.
Do you want to, do you, why don't you read all the grant applications, and we do one motion for all of them, or?
Well, I'd rather do them separate, because each one's different. Each one's different.
Okay.
So, did I get a second?
So I made the motion.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Keep me in line. I can go astray. I'm human.
We all can. We're all human.
Okay. This one is for a grant application category for West Carpenter Hill Road, number one. Is, please provide a thorough description. See, although flat at the top, the roadway becomes very steep with no ditches, this is causing severe erosion, which is transporting sediment to the stream at the bottom of the hill. And this is a grant that he's applying for. What is your pleasure? This must be the sign sheet for that. I know that moved this apart here.
Get your sign here.
Okay, you move by sign?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Thought there was two of those. Yes, there is. Let me find the other one. This is also for West Carpenter Hill Road, number two. This section is, roadway is very steep with no ditches. This is causing severe rail erosion, which is transporting sediment to the stream at the bottom of the hill. And that goes on to describe the work that's being done and the cost. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The people that don't know, because it wasn't really explained that much, that's, they're ditching, and then they're stone lining, so it slows the water down.
That's if we get the grant.
If we get the grant. I'm just saying that that's, you know.
That's the project, yeah, actually at both ends by the looks of it.
Yeah.
This was similar to the work that was probably done on Man Hill, where we, all the ditching.
Erosion control.
Yeah. Okay. I have a letter here to Green Mountain Power. Thank you, Linda, for drafting this, to do with the complaints we've been getting about the trees and cutting along Route 7. Has everybody had a chance to read this? Okay, we're basically asking Green Mountain Power to clean it up and respond to us. Would, take a motion to sign and have it sent?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now, we have a letter from the state of Vermont to do with Montgomery Road. While reviewing the road center lines, town of Pownell, ortho photograph, they noticed that there was a realignment of TH42, Montgomery Road. And what they've done is taken a measurement and have said that the mileage was reduced by .05 from .95 to .90 on this road from where it was changed, even though it looked like we went out in the field and actually made that a little longer. They, nowadays, they have a way of measuring it, much different than they did years ago. If you feel there's any, contact them if we have any questions about this. Do we have any questions about it, or are we okay?
It's fine with me. I looked it over.
Okay. Okay. Just made questions, now the time's to respond. Updated regulatory certificates for Vermont 346 Pownell. Vermont Traffic Committee approved an updated no parking certificates and updated speed limit certificates for Vermont 346 and Pownell. So they must have, they do this every so often where they go down and actually check the mileage and speeds, places and where it is, that they went down and verified it. We have a delinquent tax report, which, go right to the last page. Basically, the total amount that's due in back taxes now is $493,278.83, and that's for the years 1998 through 2017, of which 2017 is $309,913.57 without interest and penalties. So that's your lion's share.
When you tell people that, and you read the far right-hand number, the $493,278.83, that's with interest and penalties.
Correct.
So the people know that.
Yep.
Okay, the actual taxes due to the town are the $442,139.83.
Thank you.
Okay, just so that, it is, I mean, $50,000 is a big difference, people.
Yep. Is that usual at this time of year, right when after taxes are due, that it's three or $400,000 like that?
Yes. Yes, and it, 93% paid, so we have 7% delinquency. It runs between 7% and 9% delinquent every year.
Okay. So people will be coming in and paying some of that anyways?
They already have. It was three, 2017, actual delinquent taxes on November 10th was like $347,000. It's already at 309, so.
Oh, yeah, so they're coming.
They're coming.
I'd just like to say, I think Ellen's doing a great job with it, and it's, it's the same as it is every year, only you cleaned up a lot from other years, and there's only some, some, with two years. There's very few with two years.
Yeah. And the other, the other thing we should remind people is that a tax sale is occurring on some property on December 6th.
On December 6th, there's three parcels at this time.
And it's held here?
And it's held here, and the parcels are posted out on the town clerk board and at the village market if they wish to read about them.
Okay, December 6th, 10 o'clock.
At 10 AM. If they want to know, they can call, like, the day before, or a couple days before, and make sure there's still a sale, because people can still pay off right up until that morning.
And who should they call? Ellen?
They should call 823-5326, Treasurer's Office.
Okay.
They can use this phone here.
Okay. Thank you.
Question, would that be something we put on their website?
I don't know if the link with tax sales up on it, but it makes sense to do that.
If, I haven't posted it yet, because I was giving, I have one more that might be coming off, and I was just waiting for that before I posted everything up there. I was giving it the, because, just because there may not.
Yeah, and there is some time between now and December 6th.
Right, right. It will go up next week.
Okay, on the website?
I'm contacting her on Monday. I was just waiting, giving the person a few more days to pull it together, to see if they got that one off the list yet.
Okay.
And then I'm going to post the two that will be left. Otherwise, they'll be three posted.
Thank you. Very helpful. Okay, the other thing we have here is we have a letter from our wastewater treatment supervisor to do with uses and recreational activities at the wastewater treatment facilities area, and voicing her concerns and providing us with some documents. We're going to be talking about that pretty soon, so we'll discuss what those issues are at that time. This goes in here too?
Yep.
Okay, and we have the Bennington County Sheriff's Office report. They patrol 26.5 hours a week for the town of Pownell. This is a report from October 1st and November 1st. And basically, they handled a total of 74 calls, two 9/11 hangups, four agency assists, two public assists, one burglary, one agency assist fire and rescue, six bin verifications, 18 directed patrols all over town, traffic stops, 40, 11 tickets were issued, 28 written and verbal warnings. I got all the mail now, guys?
I think so. I think so.
Thank you. Okay. Administrative assistant report.
Okay, the certified noticing, posting, and publishing for discontinue roads were completed. The better road application for the inventory of the hydrologically connected segments was submitted. Been working with the road foreman to get the Snake Hill Road and Carpenter Hill Road applications submitted by the end of the week. Snake Hill Road application is for fund, federal fundings. Reimbursement request for Man Hill South Project to be submitted Friday. Working with BCRC and the road foreman on the draft skipper re-road agreement for the sediment and erosion project along said road. That's been in limbo for quite some time for folks to figure out exactly where the project, what the project scope was going to be, so we have it down kind of now. We're still tweaking the agreement. The structures grant reimbursement will be completed and submitted following the receipt of the canceled checks. Regarding the memo I gave the board regarding the demolition of the building, I request authorization to obtain an environmental assessment for the building slated to be demoed. I'd like to work with Catamount.
The board moved to do so?
Does it cost us anything?
Of course.
What's it cost us?
I have no idea.
Do we know what it cost us for the other building?
Not at the moment.
I want to say $4,000.
Yeah.
Okay.
The mobile home building was quite expensive.
You can't take it down without having the assessment.
Yeah.
So let's get it done.
But to answer the question, it's somewhere in the thousands for the permitting process.
Unfortunately, it's quite costly.
Okay, but we got a motion to do that?
Yes, we do.
And I get a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes, we want to take care of that other issue, the ceiling we were, you mentioned.
The safe.
The same time.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, have them do them both.
That one would be a separate one, but.
Yeah, but we get, let them do both.
While they're here.
Get it done.
Very good.
Okay.
What safe are we talking about?
The rear safe right here.
There's a small safe here, just behind me, that is attached to the larger safe, but it has its separate wall, and it was built, material, we're not sure of. We're going to find out.
But the ceiling has been cracked for quite some time now, and it's.
We need to find out what it is.
Yeah, we need to find out how it needs to be repaired.
Okay. So, so that takes, let me get, call the motion here. Any more discussion on that? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And my last item is, I spoke with the chief operator regarding the senior citizen, the sewer use charges that we were talking about in the previous meeting, and she agreed that the sewer use charges should have been billed to the property owner per the sewer use ordinance. Since this matter is for a sewer commission decision, Darcy suggested the sewer commission hold a special meeting here at the town office without her. She didn't feel that it was necessary for her to be here. Our next meeting with Darcy won't be until February, at which time we'll be working on the treatment plant O and M budget, which gets voted for in March.
What's, when's the next billing period for the wastewater?
December 1.
We need to do that.
I mean, currently, right now, it's being billed to the property owner.
Yeah, what we want to do is do it.
Got to schedule that in right away. The property owner has already contacted me again.
We need to do a decommission.
I told her not to pay it until we settle it. I said, we've been fighting over it, we got to get it done.
I'm in agree with that. I don't have a trouble with that. Let's, I'm just trying to think of when we're going to fit it in, because it's a decommission.
All right, if you're going to do a decommission, then we need to have Darcy, because that is part of.
Because we have to have Darcy here.
Right.
I was going to say that. Because you can't just ignore, ignore the price. We need to, if we're going to do what we're talking about doing, we're going to do a decommission, and then we won't have to worry about any future billing on it. It'll be done. And I think that's the appropriate way to follow the rules and regs of our wastewater process, so.
I do, considering there's no water to the building.
Yeah, that's, that's when we should just decommission. So why don't you talk to Darcy, see how she, soon we can meet, let her tell her we're going to decommission, bring the paperwork that's necessary.
Okay.
So we can decommission. And the board has authority as wastewater, through either waive cost or not at that time, we'll deal with it.
So do we have to meet as a sewer commission down there?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a formal process.
Yeah, so just have her notify us, and we'll get it done. It might not be before December 1st, but it'll be before the end of December. We need to do it.
About prior to December 1, if possible?
Yes. If not, we can always back, you know, forgive back billing, so it's, it's up to us. So it isn't like it's, it's a necessary, we need her to be prepared, I guess is the word I want to use, that she has the forms and so forth. So to tell her today that she's got to be ready by then, might, let's make sure she.
Let me work with Darcy, we'll figure it out, and I'll get back to the board with the date.
Yeah, I think that's the best way. Okay? Anything else?
No, that's for me.
Okay.
I have a couple questions.
Sure.
Go ahead.
And I know you've been working with Chuck Watson on the phones and the computers and the copiers, I just wondered if the new phones are in?
No. Computers were first on the list, he's still working on it. He's scheduled to come tomorrow to work. He had to wait until Ellen was done with taxes to finish her part, and he's almost done, but not quite.
Okay, so the new server's in and all that?
The server's there, we're just not all networked exactly to it.
Yeah.
And he needs to have a day, he needed like a day or two when the computers weren't in high demand.
A little slow.
Right.
Okay, and the holidays are coming.
And to not interrupt Ellen's work.
The holidays are coming.
So Ellen gave him, you know, her schedule, and he's going to try to do what he, as much as he can tomorrow.
Okay. And he's also still, he's still checking, he'll do the phones afterwards?
Yeah.
He's still checking the price on the computer?
He was already checking on the phones. He needed to have the board's decision last week on, amended, attended, and one copier person has come here, and he's spoken with another.
Okay. And I think on the 21st of September, we also asked him to check on cameras for the transfer station.
I don't know where he is with that.
Okay.
This whole process with the computers has been very long and disruptive.
Yeah, yeah.
Very.
Okay, I just wanted to know where we stood on all of it. Because we've been working on this since August, and you guys need this stuff to work.
Any other questions, comments? Without that, I'll move on. Victor, you've got the floor.
Thank you. My name is Vic Malani, I'm the investigator and SBSU coordinator for safety for the district. This year, we initiated emergency operation plans in all schools within the SBSU district, obviously Powell Elementary being one of them. We started meeting back last January with the Safety Committee at Powell Elementary. They were extremely helpful. We worked together to develop the emergency operation plan that is now in place. Part of that emergency operation plan involves an evacuation off-site from the school, should that be necessary. The building that is selected, as far as Powell Elementary School, is the Powell Center Fire Station. Mr. Phillips has access to that building. We've been down there, certainly, we've made diagrams of the building and indicated where students would be housed and other members of the school community, should we have to evacuate there. The district, to protect all of these reunification sites, and we call them reunification sites because should we evacuate there, we'd have to bring buses there, and obviously make preparations for students to be able to either picked up or bussed out of that location. As part of that plan, the district has asked their attorneys to develop memorandums of understanding, so that we could use that building and assure the property owner, and in this case, it's the town, that should we do any damage in evacuation like today.
It's not, the town doesn't own that building.
Who owns that?
The Fire Department is incorporated.
Okay, all right. So, but the selectman would sign off, I assume, on this?
No, there would be a board. The Fire Department has a board.
Has their own board.
They have a regular board.
Okay, so what we would have to do then is rework this and approach that board. Okay, so that would.
Next Monday night is the scheduled meeting, monthly meeting, I can give you the information and.
Okay. Can I give you an email and you?
Absolutely.
Email that to me?
Sure, I will.
Okay. Okay, so that, well, the selectmen will be aware of that, essentially, that's what our intention would be, to be able to get the Fire Department, and that would be my era, I assume, that that, since it was a Fire Department building, it was owned by the town, but obviously, that's not correct.
No, they're incorporated, there's a couple of them in town.
Okay. So, can I give you my email, and could you send me that information?
Certainly, absolutely.
Okay. So, again, just, just for your information, met with the Pownell School Board, we are going to be doing some security upgrades, and I heard mention of cameras. We are going to add some additional cameras, hopefully, in that building. We're also going to upgrade from analog to digital, which will enhance the, the ability of the camera to capture identities and so forth, which will be our objective. So, again, I would like to thank you for your time, and certainly, I will.
I have a question for you. Are you familiar with, the town has a, has an emergency response plan.
Okay.
And in that emergency response plan, the town's designated building is the school's.
Okay.
Are you familiar with this, our plan?
And that, that's the case, I was in Woodford last night, and that's exactly the case there, because of the generating capability at the building. And that's not going to change at all. It's just, should we have to evacuate from the school, we want to be able to have a site to go to. The Pownell Center Fire Department is the building of choice. So, what I'd like to do is be able to see you on Monday night and get those signatures, so I would need the names of people. So, if I can just give you my email?
Sure, perfect.
We can, we can work that out.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Okay, well, we thank you for coming in, because this informs our citizens anyways, because we're live on TV.
And I'm happy to do that.
That's very good. Okay. With that done, moving on. Shannon, you're here to talk about recreation.
That's right.
You can introduce your group and.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Excuse me if I can reach in for the air. Thank you.
Okay.
Got you later.
Thanks for having us tonight. This is Jim Sullivan, the director of the BCRC, is here, part of the team, and Ray Rodriguez, who's the chair of the Recreation Task Force. So I'm going to let Ray talk about the background. I also sent everybody an email, I don't know if you got a chance to look at it a little bit about the background, but I'll let Ray start.
Well, you might remember the large public meeting that we had a few months back, in which people voted on various areas of interest that had been generated earlier. And recreation, of all the areas, received more votes than any other area, no no votes, so there's a lot of interest in that. We formed a Recreation Task Force. The Task Force immediately created four different subgroups. One for hiking, one for river recreation, one for ATVs, and one for children's recreation. We did it, started by doing some inventories of what really exists here in town, to begin with. So we looked at public trails with public access. There are five public trails in town. Only one of them is actually within Pownell and has public access. The other four have to be accessed either through Massachusetts or the state of New York. There are lots of other trails with no public access, like, the largest area of that is the Strobridge Recreation Area, but you can't get to it unless you get your feet back, crossing the river. Children's Recreation, we looked at those, and there are four that we could figure out, the largest of which is the elementary school playground area. You've got the Bartel Yards out here, the baseball diamond, and Oak Hill School is willing to have some recreation there. And we learned in the process of doing this of the wastewater treatment plant area, which is the largest Powell land on this side of the river that has public access. Children's Recreation Group, when it saw it, was really very excited about the potential. Because all the other pieces of partly planned around here are relatively small and may indeed have some public concerns about their use from neighbors who live around those particular areas. So, we did some research, went back through all the documents, going back to the original germination of the idea for the superfund site, to see what they had to say about the wastewater treatment plant and recreation on that. Every one of them that refers to recreation on the wastewater treatment plant refers to it very specifically and positively as one of the positive potential. But there are some caveats. For example, we cannot dig into the surface of that. Can't even put a sign up. We could put a sign on a base, but we can't dig into the ground. But we could bring in soil on top of it for various purposes. We could make wooden walkways across there for various purposes if we want. We noted when we went down there that there's an existing road on top of it, turn around. So, we figured, well, if cars and trucks can drive across this land, why can't hikers walk across it and kids bicycle across the land? So, we called in an EPA representative from District Two in Boston. Came out, who reviewed those same documents, came out here and walked the land with us. And he said essentially just that. It's fine for recreation, just don't dig into the soil. And he recommended that we not use the capped landfill and let the town determine how it wants to use that. We've recognized that security is a real problem down there and we would have to address that if we do indeed go ahead with a recreation plan for down there. I mean, for example, there's an ATV trail that goes from the gate down toward the river, turns back up the berm and has ripped up the ground cover there, causing a weakness in just the point where the river hits. If there should be a major flood, that's a problem. Luckily, we've had a group of, a team of Williams College students who had an environmental class, three very white students who are doing some background research for us. They've interviewed various people in town. They've interviewed elementary school students. And they've looked into the background and the history of the site as well. So, they're coming up with a proposal and a plan for themselves that may or may not apply to what we wanna do, but it's been really very helpful having them. And then finally, the Vermont Youth Conservation Corps is very interested in coming down here and helping us, should we be able to get the grant to fund them. And they're willing to hire youth, young people from Powell to help work on building some of the trails that we'd like. So, now, we're faced with a grant deadline and I'll let Shannon tell you about that.
All right. So, I think it was Dawn, Ray's wife, who told me about this recreational trails program grant. And I believe it's a federal grant, but then it's given to the states to distribute and it's for various kinds of recreation. So, we started looking at it. The first thing that popped out was that you need a 20% match, like a lot of these grants are. And so, before coming to you guys, I said, well, let's see if we can figure out how to raise that 20% match. And we were really lucky that because of our contacts with the BCRD, the Vermont Council on Rural Development, they kind of tapped us into a lot of state agencies. And the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board contacted us and said, "We have some funding for grant writing assistance that we could allocate for Powell and it's $5,000." So, we called Jim and said, "Hey, Jim, would you write this grant for us since you have experience doing this grant and have written up this recreational trails grant for Arlington?" So, he agreed. And so, now we're at the point where we could go forward with the process with the board's approval to do this as for the municipality of Powell.
Okay, so you're gonna write up a grant proposal and usually in the grant proposal, you're gonna outline what some costs of certain things are gonna be and then we have to match it 20%. Do we have any idea at all what we're asking for in this grant at this time, money-wise?
Right. Well, if, you know, $5,000 is the 20% match, so then we would be eligible for $25,000 of funds. We could certainly do a trail work for that cost.
Okay, especially if you worked with the trail groups and the others that are out there.
And when we're talking about trails, we're talking about crushed gravel, perhaps some boardwalks in the wetter areas. So...
Okay, okay, so basically at this point, then, you're not asking for any money from the town.
Right.
What you're asking for is permission to go get a grant that you'll then basically say, here's what we're doing. And at that point, we'll also see that as the grant proposal and see what the work is that's being done and have a chance to comment.
Right. And Jim can talk a little bit more about that. But basically, there's a letter of intent, which is pretty simple. It's like a one-page thing that we've done some of the background research on already. And that is due December 1st, saying, "We intend to apply for this." And then the actual application is due February 1st. So, that's the time.
So, what is it you're asking us for specifically?
Well, we're asking if, in order to apply, I'm sure you probably have more experiences with this than me, but when you, you know, there would need to be like a contract with the BCRC that, you know, Jim was being hired. The payment for him has already been allocated. That contract would be with the town.
But basically, if I understand these grants, basically what you're looking for is support from the town showing that they approve of this grant and its process.
Right.
Usually showing that we back it as a community. And I think that's what, that's what I'm trying to get. Is that the motion that you're looking for?
Right.
Is that we will approve you going forward with this grant with the understanding that the grant proposal, once it's been approved and so forth, the actual project that's out of that, the town will get to review and citizens of the town and so forth.
And in fact, in talking to the EPA representative, they would also review that. So, anything that would be done would have to be reviewed by the EPA. It would be reviewed by the town. And, you know, the recreation group would need to have approval from the town in order to put the town's name, you know, as part of it.
And you'd have to get approval from the EPA for whatever you're doing because of the restraints on this land?
Exactly, right.
Okay, so what's the board's push?
I think we need to read the piece of the letter from the wastewater treatment plant operator that was in our mail.
Right.
I think that's important, that we address that, because we have a concern from our wastewater treatment plant operator.
Yeah, if I could just, you know, from my perspective, we're just here to do what you guys wanna do. As far as the application itself goes, it's due February 1st. Since it's town-owned property, probably the town would be the, technically be the applicant. So, you know, when the application came around, we were working on the final application, you'd basically be asked to sign off as the applicant and acknowledge your responsibilities. By that time, we would have a pretty well-defined scope. We've already kind of laid out the alignment of what the little loop trail would be. There's already like a gravel drive by half of it. That would just be probably resurfaced and then we'd have to just loop back around to that little parking area, I guess. So, that's really, I'm, you know, have some ideas about what the cost would be, but I would like verify those with a civil engineer if you decide to go ahead.
Okay. Let me re-throw concerns. I'll start off with apparently there has been much discussion regarding its extensive recreational usage in and on the former lagoon area surrounding the wastewater treatment facility. A great portion of which is in the established flood plain, which we know. Therefore, I felt it important to relay to the board members the existence of a document executed by the town of Powell for the benefit of the state of Vermont HCM Natural Resources in December 2013 regarding the restriction use of Powell Tanary Superfund Site, AKA the former lagoon area surrounding the wastewater treatment facility. Please see the attached group copy of legal executed agreements referenced above. There are very specific restrictions, mandates, and must be adhered to. I have highlighted some of the more important noted on the attached document itself. Restricted uses. Graners shall not take or authorize any of the following activities, actions, or parcels without the prior express written consent from the grantee after a reasonable opportunity for review and comment. And that's from the EPA, which is what you said basically, if the EPA has to sign off on this and nothing could happen there anyways. Construction substantial improvements or stabilizing of buildings, plowing, tilling, ditching, diking, filling, and et cetera, which is all breaching the land, which is what, you said that you understand that and you're not gonna do that. But again, we'll see what the grant says at that point. Enforcement, the entire section is critical for the board to read. This miscellaneous rights and obligations, nothing herein shall give or grant the public a right to enter upon or to use the parcel or any portion thereof where no such right exists in the public media prior to the execution of this grant. On a professional, please be reminded of the previous vandalism issues of lagoon areas such as dumping garbage, parties, meetings, vehicles, ripping apart the lawn and doing donuts, and et cetera. In the parking area. Individuals breaking glass, beer bottles, gun shooting activities actually compromised has been documented at numerous means of the wastewater treatment facility in conjunction with the executed agreement. These are the reason why the WWTF property is supposed to be no trespassing. The town has been very proactive and taken appropriate steps to keep public out of the area as mandated by the attached document. The re-establishment of the gate at the upper driveway location originally installed by the EPA as part of the remediation project has seriously curtailed the worst of the vandalism. In summary, the superfight site is not an appropriate venue to create an area for formal recreational activities. By doing so, the town is opening itself up to a number of liabilities now and in the future years to come. It's the responsibility of the employees and representatives of the town of Powell to secure the project. It's multi-million dollar wastewater treatment facility, surrounding grounds, and to adhere to the agreement made by the town with the associated state and federal agencies. Then it goes on with some things that I can't quite read because of the way the print is. But the gist of this is that the EPA has very strong restrictions on the property. And you must discuss with the EPA before any actual activity is done and they need to sign off on it, as does the town. And with that understood, I guess is the, are you still okay with what you're planning and what you're doing?
Absolutely.
No problem with discussing it with those people, making sure you get okay? There's no sense with you guys trying to design something if the EPA doesn't give you the okay.
That's right.
Right. But I think, I mean, I was hoping Darcy would come tonight because I am concerned that she's very opposed to public use. And I think we're, I mean, we would, we had hoped to work together as a team. I mean, I think the fact that there is a gate and that can be shut, that area off at night is actually a good thing. And that, I think that the gate situation could stay as it is and we can work around that for people walking in or bringing a bike. I know there is use now. I know it's a popular fishing spot. And that a lot of that stuff has been cleaned up just because people can't get their ATV in as easily. And they're still getting around.
Well, the town did a grant with the EPA back in, God, I don't know how many years ago. But there was a $97,000 grant that was for recreational use of this property. Okay, so the EPA was okay with some of the recreational uses we were having, but very carefully does not want that top ground broken into, okay? So, even when you do trails or so forth, you know, I used to hike to the White Rocks when I was a kid in Bennington. And it used to be on top of the land along with it. Now that the trail has become to the point where I can't see over it when I'm walking it. So, we'd have to have, make sure there's maintaining and structure so we don't degrade the property as it is. So, I guess when you write the grant, if the board approves, we clearly want it to show in our grant request that we're signing off on that is dependent upon the EPA approval. Okay? That's where I'd be at with it.
And I might just add that one of the things we've been thinking about doing is trying to create some kind of trail, whether it's here or elsewhere, some kind of public trail steward program. Where we can have volunteers who could monitor trail use wherever it happens to be.
Good, good.
People draw up a sketch of this of some sort, showing what's going on? Did this just take in the lagoon property?
Say it again.
Does this just take in the lagoon property? I'm very familiar with that property.
Yeah.
Number four lagoons, the flat one down at the bottom, toward the river.
It's the lower level where the couple of, two lagoons were in the third area.
Goes down on the bottom.
Yeah, well, that goes into the lagoon.
Yeah, we just, we kind of just sketched out how a trail might...
The only reason I was asking was, first of all, how are people gonna access this? They're gonna come down the wastewater treatment highway to park there?
One of the thoughts we had is that people can park at the current town garage area.
And walk in.
Kids could be, we wouldn't then need to allow cars to come into the area except maybe to drop kids off, turn around, head right back out and park. So, that would, that would...
I was curious about that because there's also a railroad crossing that goes into that property. And I'm sure that, I don't wanna see any recreation going over that thing because there's no signals there. There's nothing. That's a farm crossing.
Yeah, the one down below.
So, that's gotta be put into the mix here, you know, somehow or another. That, well, I mean, I don't think that people should be going across there all kind of signage or something.
Is that on that land or on the next person's land?
It's the next parcel.
Where the field is, where the cornfield is?
That's right, the cornfield. That's right. And the cornfield does not belong to the wastewater.
Right, so there needs to be signage there.
They own the property down something or fenced off or whatever, whatever it has to be. I'm just gonna, if we're gonna, well, even though it's a grant, you get some money, we still have to spend some money.
Right.
And if we're gonna spend a bunch of money and then it isn't feasible or usable, it doesn't make much sense to me. That's all. I mean, if we can use it, we can, I'm all for the people parking in where the warehouse is. That's fine. Or even if during the day, if there was a special event and they open the gate and they run them down one side of that road, it probably wouldn't hurt nothing. I don't know what this amounts to or how much it's gonna gather. But I agree with Shannon. That gate should be closed in the evening.
Yes.
Before dark, to, you know, to keep people out of here because that's when you get the vandalism and the...
Right. And I would see the gate being open only when we have some kind of monitor or steward to watch.
Somebody there.
And I agree 100% with the thing because they, there's one thing you gotta be a little bit careful about. Is when they dug up that stuff and they put it all in that mound behind that wastewater treatment plant. That's plastic lined and it's got a plastic cover. But they also dug out the old dome. That's in lagoon four. They just buried it. See? I don't know if the EPA even admits to this. But I went over and took a look at it because I lived down in that area. And I don't think that hiking or bicycling would probably do any harm going across that property because they covered it over pretty good. But that isn't a sealed thing. I just wanted you to be aware of that. EPA might even bring that up. I don't know.
Yeah, they don't want any ground broke. They, I've talked to them many times.
And I mean, I don't care what's done with that property. It just sits there.
Right. Well, and if you put some crushed gravel or something, it would actually make it so you could walk through there without getting so many ticks. You could have kids ride their bike because it's off the road. I mean, it's a nice, this is pretty low-impact stuff that we're talking about. There's already some trails there.
Yeah, well, you gotta go through the EPA and I'm sure that they'll be probably strict enough to, you know, because there's a lot of money invested down there. You stand on that bridge and look around. There's millions and millions of dollars you can look at.
Oh, you betcha.
I know.
And that's a big investment for, and the government, you know, the federal government, they were the ones who invested most of it.
Yeah.
And I'm sure that they would like, and I can see Darcy's concern. She's running a show down there. She wants it to be, she don't want any problems. The thing is just about staying afloat now with the amount of members, the amount of customers it has. So, it's hard. We don't want any problems there either.
Yes, they've done a good job.
If you go through them procedures, I mean, it sounds pretty, pretty good to me, the whole three years as far as your presentation, but I was just wondering where people were gonna park. And I surely don't want them going down, it's a private drive anyway, going down to that other field. See, and it should be fenced off. You know what I mean? Because while the wastewater treatment plant is fenced off from the railroad anyway. And I think the fence runs down across by that cornfield. If that fence was there, that would keep the hikers out of there.
It does.
Does it get out through there? I ain't been over there in quite a while. But if that does, then there's no problem. But I was thinking, you know, if they could wander over in there and then be going across the railroad tracks or something.
Especially where there's no lights.
People with their headphones on and their radio playing.
Talking on their cell phones.
That's the only concerns I have.
Okay, anybody else?
I'm nervous because I think we have an obligation to support our chief operator. I'd like to be able to somehow come to an agreement or some type of an understanding with all parties before we, if we can.
Everybody needs to work together.
If we can, you know.
Here's what I see. They're gonna have a grant. They're gonna present it to us. They're gonna present it to the EPA and Darcy should be here at that time when it's presented. And if there's things to be voiced and concerned, we need to hear them then before this board makes the final act.
I just hate to see any hard feelings. I think we're starting out.
I agree.
You know, we all wanna start out on a good note and we want it to be, I think it's a great idea. I'd love to see it happen and everything else. And I can see Darcy's concern too because she takes great pride in that place down there. She's done a wonderful job with it. She's worried about security and I think we all are. And if we can do it and still keep it secure, keep it gated or hours of operation from dust to whatever, I think we need to start off together and I think we need to work together on it.
Well, and I agree with the, if you're gonna have a group of people that's actually managing, we can put conditions on that.
Sure.
You know, the property is the town's.
Right.
We're the ones that's gonna say, if something occurs down there, it's not something that we can't say, it's over.
Right.
Put up fences and gates and stop it. I think that what we're seeing is a possibility where our childrens in our town and stuff might have some activities that are not harmful. We're always gonna have the people that'll always never obey anyways and do their things and we just have to patrol and process that. But back to the original... But back to the original question, what we need to do is get a motion tonight to move forward on this grant, and that's what I'm looking for from the board, is what I think you're looking for.
But I would be happy, I think we really want to work with Darcy, and so, you know, if we can figure out a way to, you know, I don't know to come...
We recognize the security problems, we recognize the difficulty, trash being dumped.
Right, yeah.
And we think, you know, with the type of monitoring system we're saying, we're talking about, there's actually a modicum at least.
Yeah, and as long as we all stay in the process and keep it all open, and make sure that Darcy takes a look at it, and she may even have suggestions for us or whatever.
And, and one thing that we did talk a little bit about with Darcy is that there, there've been a lot of, you know, kind of big ideas about recreation there, but we are, we do have to recognize that not only is it a superfund site, but it's also the flood plain. And so, really, I think very minimal development is, I mean, you know, maybe someday there could be a little pavilion or something, but we're not, there's not going to be, it's not going to be an area that you really want to develop, because it could be flooded. So I, I think that's just, you have to be realistic.
Years back, when it became the Strawberry Recreation Complex, I was hoping that we could use the warehouse that the town now has taken over as a skating rink for the kids. But, you know, we never had the money, nobody came about, there wasn't a recreation committee, and eventually the town used it, and it's a good purpose for the town right now, and...
Versus sitting vacant and doing nothing.
Yeah, and vandalism in it and everything else, so they, they went ahead and used it, but I'd love to see something happen with all that property.
Okay, with that said, I'll ask again, can I get a motion to have them move forward with this grant?
I'll make the motion.
Just second. More, I know we've discussed it to death here, but the motion is basically that to go ahead with that, the board will reveal it, we'll have Darcy reveal it, and go from there, once the, the actual application goes forward, because you're saying we have to come back and sign it, so.
Yeah, the, the pre-application, as Shannon mentioned, is due by December 1st, it's really just a letter and a brief description of what you're going to be applying for, and then the actual application would be developed, you know, in December, January, which would, it's not a really complicated application, but it would spell out, you know, in a little bit more detail what you're going to do and how much you expect it to cost.
Okay, and that's what we want to see. So, but I've got a motion to go ahead with this, first thing that needs to be done in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so you can go forward.
Thanks.
And if you need a copy of the minutes with the motion or something, let us know. Okay.
Good luck, guys.
Yep.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay. Demolition bids, folks, my, our understanding is, based on the administrative assistance report, is that these bids are needed to be rejected, and we will go out to bid again once we have our permits in place. Everybody in agreement with that? Not hearing no names?
Yes, I am.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Do we do a motion on that?
Get a motion to go out to, yeah, so we have to do the permits. Yeah, motion to reject?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, a motion for her, we already did that, right, gave her permission to, when the report was...
Yeah, we have a motion on that.
Okay. Town administrative job description, you just said something, you're handing out?
I know that we're scheduled to meet on the 30th, November 30th, to, as a work session on the town administrator, but I took the job description that we were originally looking at, and I wondered if, we haven't decided whether we want to do full or part-time, and that's something that we may want to, that we, I'm sure we will discuss on the 30th. So I went through the administrat, the town administrator job description that we had from Vernon, and highlighted and read some things that I thought that if we went part-time that we may want to eliminate, and I just wanted everybody to take a look at it and bring it to our meeting, and I thought it might help us get started. And now, go forward.
Okay. Well, except for that?
Yes, I think so. I got to find you one, Linda, I think I got another one.
Large gathering ordinance, read, there were some errors?
I had a couple comments on it, I don't know if, that's the other thing that we're going to talk about on the 30th, right?
That's right.
I just found a typo, and I guess, I didn't put this on the agenda, I think you did, but I found a couple of things that I thought we could discuss.
Yeah, the reason why is because...
But not much. I had a question on the date of September 13, 2016, would we change that to our date?
Yeah, there's, there's a, what I basically did is I took the two documents we looked at and tried to combine quickly, the two together to show fees and, and other things within it. I would urge you guys to review that, and I'm sure we'll make a few more changes as we go.
In the back of it tells us how to adopt or amend it, and we thought, had questions on that too. But you sent that to everybody, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
But the, but if you know of typos and stuff, please send them the message to us so that, so we can get them corrected, so when we look at it as the 30th, okay?
Okay. So what question did you have on the process?
I didn't have a question, I highlighted the back of it, on the process of what it said we needed to do.
We're doing some...
Must be adopted by a majority of the members of the board, posted in five places and all that.
This is something that we've already did with pay-as-you-drown, I'm quite familiar with all of that.
Yeah.
There's a couple of dates and things that need to be...
And it said that we would post it on the website too, which is...
Yeah, you have to, you have to wait until you officially adopt, and then you work from there with your dates.
But I like the looks of it, I think it looks great.
Okay.
I think there's just a little bit of tweaking that we need to do, and, and I guess we can do that on the 30th.
Okay, a reminder again, there will be no meeting on the 23rd, Thanksgiving, everybody enjoy your Thanksgiving holiday. And we're talking about these items, it's for the special work session, it'll be on November 30th at 7:00 PM.
Okay, so you're going to add, add this to it, I didn't know, on the 30th?
Yeah, the large, the large gathering ordinance.
Gathering ordinance.
Yeah, and basically, there's a joint meeting with the BCRC at the Powell Elementary School, which we talked about for the, and Jim has left for the River. Okay, with that, we got a legal issue that we need to...
We want to talk about the alarm system.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, you have an alarm.
So somehow or another, we need to get someone to get in here and give us a quote on an alarm system for this building and the town office. I, it sounds like we're, we're, he's behind a little bit, the question we asked.
Sounds like Chuck doesn't have time to get to it.
I can, I can, I can...
We're loading him up pretty good.
I could probably try to get that next week, try to get someone to come in, unless we have someone else that wants to do it.
Do you have companies that, in mind?
I know there's two, two local companies that we could get quotes from.
Do, uh...
Cameras, alarm...
Not cameras, I don't even want cameras.
I think, what I was, we originally talked...
We should have, as far as I'm concerned, we should have an alarm system, and if we, we have Comcast here, you can buy it through them, you can buy these systems cheap.
They have cameras through there, too.
They do, all the windows, the doors, so they're alarmed, so if anybody breaks in here, and there's a smoke, a dual smoke detector fire thing in the corner, a camera, one camera in the corner somewhere.
Yep.
But it does pick up smoke and fire and all that, it's about $40 a month.
Yeah.
And you also, it's also tied in with the state police, you got to pay them so much a year.
Are you tied into alarm system?
Yes, we are, yeah.
Okay.
So I think the one I looked at was, I think it was $26 or $27 a month.
Well, that's better, yeah.
And that was a...
All I'm saying is...
That was a, for both buildings, you would have a keypad, so whoever walks in the door would have, would have a code, and you would type in your code that you would enter the building. Each person that enters the building would have that, so you would have...
You should know, you know, if it's, most of the systems, I know, each person would have an individual code.
Yes, absolutely, right.
So it records which individuals in and out.
That's what we have at Allegiant.
That's right, and then a fire and smoke, and they can do the windows and the door with sensors, and they can do inside motion, I believe it was.
Yeah, I think that's...
You know, there's the cost of installing, which I think it was, and then it's monitored through a company, and then if the alarm goes off, you'd, you'd provide them with a list of people that would be key holders.
So this guy, this same company could do the transfer station at the same time?
The highway garage, the highway garage itself.
Oh, the highway garage.
Yep, that building and this building are the two buildings that I'm concerned with.
That's right, easier than parting one.
Okay.
Okay.
So we can get one from Comcast, and we can get one from the couple local guys?
Whoever, I don't care.
Yeah, just bring them to...
Okay, perfect.
It isn't, it isn't a lot, a lot of money, and I think it's, it's a good investment.
I agree with you.
Can I make a motion, we have Jason check into it, alarm system for the town?
Give it a second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. What else have I missed? We got one legal issue, or you got something else?
Usually, on them, one comment on them, well, any of them, I go to a lot of places that have alarms, and they'll give me their number, and in case I, you know, I have to punch the number in when I go in the door, but then also, if I screw up, you know, you get old, you press the wrong number sometimes.
Can't see it right.
They call.